You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Thank you Beverly.
You're welcome. Recording in progress.
Okay, it being 6:00 PM. I'll call to order the January 25th meeting of the planning board here at Wickham Hall. And I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
And Sloughman Rep. Ken Doherty, actually Sly Kozinski is not here. Alternate Steve Malone. Michael Scungeo alternate. Brian Vertigal alternate. And we have a forum, so we're all set for that. The only thing on the agenda this evening is the approval of four minutes from our last meeting. And we're just gonna have a workshop tonight just to maybe go over some of this stuff on, brush up on reading some of these plans, how to use some of this stuff in the plans that are of benefit and advantage, and any other thing that comes up as far as discussion show. So, let's see. The minutes, I don't have a copy of them with me, but has anybody read the minutes?
I did.
You have?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes as presented, seconded by Jane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, please make a motion, please.
If the motion was by Victoria, and it was seconded by Jane?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And let's see, before we get started, I know Michael York already knows this, he's up for, his term is up this year, and Jane, your term is up this year. You knew that, okay. Just making sure. Now, let's get on here to, let's see, we have, you know, there's Mount Caesar Elementary School site plan, but if that's something that's not really, you know, it looks like, it looks like what was the date on that? If it's not really in the works yet, which it isn't, is it?
No.
Stefan, this is just something that there, that hasn't gone, this is preliminary engineering and preliminary stuff, so let's forego that until they really have something to bring to us, and we can really go over it, I think anyway, unless someone else wants to take a look at the whole thing there.
I don't know that they will bring it to us, because they, they're not required to.
They aren't required to, but they always, usually they always bring to the planning board, the planning board comments on it, and, you know, it's just, they've been good about that.
In the spirit of heads up, just what's the general intention of the...
I haven't looked at them, I don't know. Do not know.
It's an expansion on the existing school.
Okay.
Not the high school, but the one across the street.
It's part of the plan to close this school over here.
Oh.
These are traffic over here, and really triple it all over.
This is what's the...
Thankfully, I have that roundabout.
Yeah, tell me, well. But the problem is that they got so bad a problem.
And let's see, we had, also Stefan brought up the fact that the plane view over here, they owe us some drawings for parking and landscaping, which is part of the condition of approval. And it looks like, Stefan researched it, and it looks like that would be by June 22nd, it's like when that appro, there wasn't one in July, right?
July, July.
It was July, okay.
July 17th.
July 17th, okay, there's another one, I thought it was a July one there, it was an earlier one, another one, so it looks like they have until July to bring us those revised plans. And that would be the...
I disagree a bit on that.
Meaning, yeah, what?
Meaning that they have, under the conditions from February 2nd, according to our site plan regulations, they have one year to meet all conditions for approval that we approved at that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that expires next Friday, a week from Friday.
So, there were two, I haven't read those two, I read them at the time, but I haven't read it. Do you have any copies of those here, the decisions?
I do too.
Because there was that one in July. Jane, you have a copy of it?
This is the notice of up to compliance on February 6th. And this, the conditions.
The most recent one was July.
That was on a compliance.
Yeah, but that was, that's the most recent approval.
Our regs don't say anything about having a more recent approval. Our site plan regulations, and I'm just putting this out there, I don't, you know, if we're going to say that, okay, we're making an approval, and we're gonna have a compliance hearing five months later, and then that's when, you know, we're gonna start the clock over again, we better put that in here.
Well, I don't believe the clock was started in the February one, just based off of the verbiage in the July notice of decision.
We made an approval of those, of that, with those conditions.
Very sad in our, I'd love to...
Page 13 of, under the site plan rights.
Let's, letter B.
If a conditional approval has been granted pursuant to...
6A.
6A, which is that conditional approval can be granted, it's the nearest greater than nature has no discretion. The conditions need to be met within one year, or the approval is now void, and the applicant must resubmit the application. The conditions must, need to be met within one year of conditional approval, right? Isn't that implied?
That's, that's what it says. You know, if we're, you know, if we're gonna say something different, then we need to have that in our regulations.
So, we're talking about an approval in February, February 6th, and an approval July 17th. Now, as I recall, July 17th meeting is when we changed, or allowed them to change, however it went, the number of parking spaces and changed the landscaping plan at that meeting there. So, those were not part of this condition here. The February condition had no mention of the revised parking or the revised landscaping. So, these conditions aren't the same as these conditions here, in my opinion anyway, because they weren't discussed.
We call those compliance conditions on the 6th, February 6th.
Yeah, February 6th, and...
Which implies that we would have approved it, that our approval of it was conditional upon their compliance with those submissions, right?
Well, the, it is, and let's just go right back to the July 17th one, which they came in for the compliance hearing on those conditions, showing that they had done all of that, and had all those items there. And at that meeting is when, I think we gave them the 20% reduction, reduced the parking, and also there was a change in the landscaping there at that meeting. So, as a condition of that, those two things were a condition of that, for them to bring in within a year of that July 17th meeting. So, those are conditions from that meeting there. So, the conditional approval, pretty much the whole thing is set up so that if a person comes in with a site plan to us, and there is things like permits, FAA permits, like in this case here, permits from the state, other types of permits, that they really have no control over, and the planning board has no control over as well, then they've got a year to bring those in and show that they have gotten those permits, gotten those grants to go forward with whatever they're doing there. Other conditions that the planning board sets on, like reduce parking spaces, let's see, changes in, and anything like that, those conditions are approved at the meeting, so they are approved conditions, but they have to bring them in to, not the planning board, but to this land use office to show that they've put them on that drawing. We've done it before at the meetings, we, we make sure that the conditions that we say, like a fence or something like that, are actually put on the drawings, and we want them on there because that's part of the record there.
But that's sort of an administrative thing, right? Where we, we delegate to...
Where the planning board, yeah, the planning board doesn't have to look at that, because the planning board gave the approval through a motion. Once, that's the whole approval process is a motion and a second, and then either vote affirmative or not on the motion. That is the approval regardless of whether the site plan was signed or not by a chairman, or whether those conditions were brought into the building inspector, showing that they were on the plat or not. Building inspector just won't give them a CO if they don't bring those in. But as far as approval goes, it's the approval the planning board made. It's still got the one year. He's on it, what were you gonna say to me?
Okay, this is, this is the letter that went out in February.
Okay.
Okay. Down here, compliance conditions for approval, and it lists all of them.
Yeah.
Okay. This is all part of the approval on February 2nd.
That is right. That was the initial approval, the big approval.
Okay, so part of that approval was the compliance part.
Yeah.
Okay? And part of that compliance is updated landscaping plan, updated utility plan. So, he, the, the criteria is listed here.
It is.
Okay? And, and they took until July to do the compliance.
Mm-hmm.
That should not change the clock.
Okay, so, from my regulation...
I mean, according to what we have in our books.
And you are correct about that, but the way I recall it is that when they came in for that compliance, we allowed them, or changed, we changed some landscaping on them, and they wanted a 20% reduction in their parking as well, they asked for that. After that, that was part of that, that hearing, I guess, but they were actually in for the compliance part of it, which were these things here, which all those compliance conditions were met at that meeting. But the planning board also approved a change in parking and a change in landscaping at that hearing there. And those conditions of that were that they put them on the plat and bring them in for the land use office to verify that they were on the plat. So, those, the reduction in, the 20 spent, uh, 20% reduction, which, let's see, let's see where, show a 90, the revision shall show 94 total parking spaces, and one additional tree on the south side of the rear, let's see, of the rear westernmost section of the building, and upgraded plantings. That was part of what was approved at that July meeting, right there. So, the condition that they bring it in and put it on the plat are, is the condition that goes with this decision here. And it's an administrative one, again, that doesn't have to be looked at by the planning board, it's a building inspector that will do that. But again, it wasn't a part of the February 6th one, because no mention of the board granting them 20% reduction or changing landscaping was at that meeting. So, that was not part of that approval.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If memory serves, when they came in in July, they came in with an entirely new design of the building, because they cut two stories off the back, elongated the center section, and cut one story off the front.
Was that that meeting, or was that the...
No, that was at the July 13th meeting.
I think it was before that.
I think it was...
The July, the July meeting was when he was gone, and you ran the meeting there.
Right.
And they were fussing about the 20% reduction in parking, and we had said, well, what if we granted you that, would you be willing to put in more landscaping in there? And that's when they decided that, they said, yeah, we put in that tree and leave the area grass where the parking was for people to like hang out on, or whatnot, the people that are gonna be living there. And because we, and what he's saying is because you granted them that, that that's a whole different thing. If you had have said, if we as a board had have denied it right then and there, right, if we had have denied it in the original compliance from the February meeting, would still be in standing.
Yeah.
But because we allowed them that 20% reduction in parking, as well as some other modifications to the landscaping that starts all over again from that July meeting, because we granted them that.
Yeah, for those two items.
And it's specific. It is a 20% reduction, and it tells where the tree is supposed to be, and so on and so forth, on this one. And this was a compliance hearing, this was the end of the site plan, which the site plan was approved on, this was the compliance hearing that they came to. And those conditions were set at that compliance hearing, the board agreed to allow them that reduction, and I guess if they were gonna add a tree here or there, and, or it's based out, set out in there. So, again, it, it puts it, it's a compliance issue, but it doesn't, in my opinion, it does not renege that site plan if they don't bring that drawing in to, for Mike to take a look at. Because it's, the conditions that we're talking about for the one year are generally conditions like these FAA permit, Hampshire Department, yeah, environmental services, DES, and all those types of things, sewer permit, access permit, approval from the airport manager, all of those things that the planning board does not have any power over, and neither does the, the site plan have any, or the applicant have any power over. Those are the ones that if they don't get all those ducks in a row, don't get all those permits within one year, then you start all over again, because you just can't string it out that long, you just have to start over again. Those are those compliance issues. The other compliance issue we're talking about here, which is the updated plan to show on the plat that we reduced the parking spaces by 20%, and to show the addition of trees here or there on the plat, that's an approval. And if they don't bring in the drawing that shows that it's, it's on the plat, then they don't get the CO, but they still have the approval. It's still the approval from us. They met all their compliance stuff at that hearing, all this stuff here, in my opinion.
I'm wondering if it's, the, the actual date of signing the plat is the relevant point?
No, no, it is not the...
Well, it says that approval will remain valid for one year from the date of plat signing.
Oh, yeah, on, on that part, yeah, we did say that on that part.
So, when did you sign that?
It didn't, it hasn't.
It hasn't been signed yet.
It hasn't been signed?
No.
Why?
Because I didn't proceed the plans yet.
I know that...
But the approvals, the actual approval is when the board votes on it. That's when the approval is, and looking in our RSAs and that type, that's when it is, except that in, in here, they mention approval, then they mention final approval, and, but they don't specify the difference between the two, what's what. So, there's a gray area there in the RSAs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm feeling like I could argue it both ways, which makes me wonder if this is something we should get an opinion from legal.
Yeah, we can get an opinion from those guys.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't we also, if we had...
We should, because we're having to actually decide to go, we know that this, this person is going to take us to court if we, if he discredits us. He'll be a slam dunk, he'll take us to court, or the land use board, one or the other.
Cool. Oh, that's cool.
Thank you. We'll be able to see you.
I just, I just have...
Yeah, we can keep on discussing it, for sure.
Well, I don't need to be...
I don't, we don't have anything else on the agenda.
Yeah, no.
All night.
So, the, an individual who has to have a compliance hearing, they can wait until the 11th month, come to the board and say, okay, this is my compliance, and if, you know, but other things haven't been taken care of yet, we start the clock again when he comes in and says, okay, here's the part of it for the compliance. So, we go another year.
Yeah, no.
We need to...
The way I understand it, it isn't that way, maybe it is pointing that it's that way in our site plan rights, I have to read that again. But it's generally, the approval is when the board, a motion is, is given and a board approves the site plan, that's when the approval is, that night, that date, regardless of when the chairman signs that thing, if he does or not, whoever signs it. And then, if there's a compliance hearing, because of there are permits and things that they don't have that that night, the planning board can still approve it, which they did. And they come in and show that they've got all these permits and stuff, they've got a year to show that. They came in earlier with their compliance hearing, but they could wait for a year for the compliance hearing, but the way I look at it, it's, they still got that one year from approval, because the RSAs say from approval, that's it, it goes from that. And that approval is the night that the planning board decides it.
So, so we can get a written opinion, right? From, when you ask for an opinion from legal, it will come in writing?
It can ask.
Usually does.
Because, because I'm gonna need to really like work through it? Because it seems to me like, I think what Richard's issue is, is conditions change.
We're talking about two different things though, we're talking about two different forms of conditions.
No, I don't mean that kind of conditions, I mean life changes.
But really, we are talking about two different conditions here on these plats here. This, this set of conditions for the permits and things that require a compliance hearing, those are the ones that we're talking about in our site plan rights, about the compliance part of it. The other conditions that have to be added onto the plat are conditions that need to be, like I said, added onto the plat in order for, one thing, the chairman to sign it, in order for them to get a CO from the building inspector. They can still go ahead with the project, even though they didn't issue those drawings, they can still go ahead and build a project, but it's not gonna be approved, and they won't be able to occupy the building until they bring those plans in.
But Richard's point is, what if they use that extra window of time?
The what extra window though, which extra window are we talking about? They, because again, we're talking about two different types of compliance here, two different types of conditions.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We're talking about a condition for a permit, which the planning board has no, no power over, and neither does the applicant, actually. But they've got a year to get all their permits, the things that, that aren't on the site plan. But the things that are on the site plan, the planning board approves those at a meeting, and then they're supposed to be added to the site plan at some later date. But they can still go ahead and build a project, but they won't be able to use the project until those plans are brought in to the land use board or the planning board changes. So, they're two different things we're talking about here. The issues with these guys here, that we allowed them a reduction in parking and addition of a tree here or there on that plat, those conditions have to be added to the site plan, which has to be brought into the land use board, and they say, yes, okay, you did add that, this is what the planning board wanted, that's fine, you'll get your CO. But again, they can still go on with the project, because they still have an approval. And these guys have met this part of it, which was the compliance hearing, which is all those permits, unless some of those are running out, but they had a year to get those permits. That's what that year thing means, they've got a year to get their permits, but it isn't the same to bring those drawings into the land use board, because the land use board...
In both the July 17th notice of decision, and the February 6th notice of decision, it states, "The approval will remain valid for one year from the date of plat signing, provided that active, active and substantial development work begins on the site. A one-time 12-month extension may be requested, no less than 30 days prior to the expiration of the approval for good cause shown." That's July 17th in the letter of the notice of decision to Mr. Franks. In the February 6th notice of planning board decision, the letter states, "The approval will remain valid for one year from the date of plat signing, provided the active and substantial development work begins on the site at a, in time, a one-time 12-month extension may be requested, no longer than 60, 30 days prior to the expiration of the approved for good cause shown." Now, we told him, not once, but twice, we were on our behalf, the applicant was told that he had a year from the date of plat signing, which you said has not been signed.
It has not been signed yet, and that letter shouldn't say that, it should say approval, because anywhere in here, you'll find that it goes by the date of approval, and not by when the chairman signs a plat, just for reasons like this, that the chairman won't sign it until they get those drawings in there.
Well, I hate to say it, but I think that we have two different sets of conditions. One in the July 17th approval, the other in the February 6th approval.
That's correct.
Even if we take your interpretation as to what the letter should say, we gave him two different approvals with part A of the conditions and part B of the conditions. I think part A, July 17th runs out from that date. Part B, the February 6th, runs out from that date. So, we have conditions A that have to be met, and conditions B that have to be met on two different timeframes.
But it isn't two different things, because the July meeting was him coming in from the February meeting to meet those, the set of things that we asked him to. So, he came in here in July, and we were gonna approve him for it, and then we ended up reasoning with him, or bargaining with him for the 20% reduction spaces and putting in more trees and stuff.
When he came back, had the original set of conditions been satisfied?
Yeah, at the seven, at the July meeting.
Okay, I, I think he has a timeframe, I don't know what that timeframe is, from July 17th meeting, and a different timeframe for the revised conditions of the February 6th.
He does, but that's only because those letters were sent out like that, they shouldn't be sent out like that. I, I don't read the letters before they go, but they should be sent out so that it's upon approval of the plat, because of just something, just like this, you come in for a compliance hearing, you don't get an extension of your approval, the extension went from approval. But, you know, since it said signing of the plat, then yeah, you, it would see, seem that they have an extension.
But if the first set of conditions, to get the sign of the plat from him.
Okay.
If the first set of conditions were satisfied.
Yeah.
And then when he came back and said, I wanna make some changes, the conditions of the second set of, the set of changes has an entirely different timeframe, whatever that timeframe is, between...
Only because...
Only because of the additional conditions.
Only, no, only because of the letter, because the, the approval was, the approval was done on February 6th, I guess it was there, and that was when the site plan was approved.
February 2nd, excuse me.
Second, okay.
I'm, I'm looking for minutes.
Okay, that's, that's when it was approved, so it goes from there. The compliance hearing is after that, which they had in, in July there. But the approval still runs from when it was approved. Jane, I wanna get to you before you lose your train of thought.
Thank you. I think all this discussion confirms what Victoria has said, we really need to run it by legal.
And the question we want...
There's too much question.
So, the question we want to know, or the answers we want are, does the approval, or does the clock start running when the approval is approved, or when, when the board votes to approve?
So, then, my question is, there was two approvals?
Yes.
There weren't, no. There was one compliance hearing, and we approved a modification to the site plan, but we approved the site plan in February. That was the approval.
So, when you approve a modification, you still have the same amount of time to meet those new requirements?
No, you don't, no, it's, it's the approval, it's one year from approval of the site plan. And you had a question.
Yeah, Mark Scolera, picking up on you. Seems to me that the approval was given in February, and that started that one-year clock.
Right.
The fact that they came in in July and had modifications, and those modifications would help to meet some of the conditions, as well as some of the demands, okay, they were dealing with, really to me means that, you know, what you asked for coming out of that July hearing, you know, updates to the plans and all that, still needs to be accomplished within that one year that started in February. That's how I would interpret what I'm hearing, you know, what you guys are reading here.
Which is why we need the attorneys.
Absolutely. From the public.
Because like I've said, if we don't get it right, this guy will take us to court, as you well know too.
He'll, he'll take you to court, and he's needed all day.
Well, I'm concerned about...
You can't let that...
No, not necessarily, no. But we have that in mind.
It's this case for sure, but it's also the more global question. It's, it's this case for sure, but it's also the more global question because it's unclear, you know? When does that clock start? And, and our concern, I think, is that we feel like we're under the gun all the time. We don't have enough time to make good reasoned decisions and yet feels like applicants are able to expand on their, you know, the time in which...
And stretch.
Yeah, which doesn't seem fair.
One thing that we do is generally we either grant or adjourn or continue the night of the hearing. Very rarely do we have a reserved decision and give us the time that you're talking about to think and digest and read the minutes and go back over things. Shouldn't we start to think about reserving decision rather than grant, deny, or continue on the night of the hearing?
It doesn't stop the time we have to actually reach a decision though, because also step-by-state statute.
Well, we meet every two weeks if you're in the law.
Well, the more way to get a... Yeah, that's true, but still.
And we don't...
We got 60 days usually to approach.
Okay.
Okay, but it's more, that's more time than we give ourselves right now. 60 days, two weeks is more time than on the spot.
This one, we took more time on.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you know...
We have the amount of time that the state grants us.
Right.
Every planning board has the same exact amount of time as we do.
Yes, and that's 60 days.
Regardless. Okay, so we can drag out the full 60 days if you want, which is what you're saying that we should do. Or we can grant them a denial, or I mean, grant them a site plan or a deny it, or continue.
I'm not saying the full 60 days, but what I'm saying is for complex applications, we don't have to deny, grant it or deny it on the spot.
No, that's a decision we make.
And we haven't, in this one we're talking about here, we have multiple meetings on that one.
Yeah, but still, even after the final meeting, we did not reserve decision. We granted. And I'm saying that on complex cases, we should not grant immediately. We're not required to, but we do. Complex or simple.
Yeah, other boards do that, I know. You know, they'll, they'll save all the decisions up until either the end of the meeting or another meeting entirely to deliberate on them.
Just one other, these conditions and administrative conditions in February was not the first time that they were presented. This goes back, these conditions have been pretty much posted going back to August at least.
When they first came before us.
Right. So I mean, it's, it's not something that we all of a sudden added to there.
No, not at all.
That they were not aware of in order to get approval.
And they were fine with it. They, they complied with it. When they came for their compliance hearing, they had all that stuff done that we asked them to in February. It was all done. And they wanted to change the parking and they wanted to change the landscaping, or we wanted to change the landscaping, however that went there. That's, that's where the confusion comes from. That meeting there, that compliance hearing was turned into a modification hearing and they were granted some changes in their site plan. Which the planning board has authority to do, they can do that. But the, the clock doesn't run from that meeting. It runs from the first.
That's what I'm saying. It shouldn't start from that.
It doesn't. It starts from when it was approved. And I was just looking here, we can at some point go back in the land use here because it does say where, when the clock starts. And, and I'm pretty sure it says from approval of the plat, not from signing of it. And sometimes they use final approval, but they don't distinguish what final approval is, so.
Stefan, do you have like in your software, Stefan, do you have like alerts to say that with each application, will something pop up on your screen that says that the day is almost up?
I'm sure I could set that up.
You know, I just wondered because we've got a lot of these big and narrow ones that will expire. Because, you know, we need to be able to administer this stuff. And I couldn't hold that much.
But this one, we wouldn't be able to expire on them for that, what we're talking about there. But we would if they don't have substantial development.
I hate to suggest it, sir, but I think you want Stefan to sit down and go over language.
Yeah, we need to change that. I wasn't aware it said that and I never see the decisions, so yeah, it shouldn't say signing of it.
Obviously, there's stock language that is used.
Yeah, it's been used all probably like forever.
Needs to be revised.
Yeah. Yeah, because regardless of what the planning board says, we have to adhere to what it says in there.
Yes.
They could write when the guy signs it or whichever, but if it's in court, this is what they go by right there.
I think we should table this until I talk to counsel.
That's right. We'll get an opinion from counsel, see what he says about that. So.
I just have one question. If somebody continued and asks for an extension, of course, it's an extension. Is that guaranteed or is that something that the board approves?
The board approves it.
Not guaranteed.
No, no. If the board wants to approve it, they can, obviously. If they have good reason to approve it. If the applicant comes in and says, you know, they just couldn't get the building materials, they can prove this or that or whatever. That's something it can take into consideration. But if they come in, want the extension because they've been dragging their feet, then the planning board can say, no, start all over. They could say, we couldn't get the money. Planning board can still say, no, you know, start again.
And is the part of the reasoning behind that, that, you know, development changes over time? And so what once seemed like, you know, development in the middle of an open field, suddenly now is a development that's proposed for, you know, a congested area or something. So it's to try to stay current. So it's, you know, it's a reasonable thing, to my liking.
All right then.
Thank you.
Shall we take a look at some of these blueprints?
Nothing on the agenda.
These drawings. Nope, nothing else on the agenda anyways. Wait, I've got, still got the, the plans for the market basket over there. And I think what we can do is just slide a table out and just lay it out on one table.
Or just grab one table on the side.
No, we're gonna slide that middle table, I've got the microphone on. Let's slide that end table out and put it right there. Absolutely, absolutely. We're gonna slide this table out. And we're gonna put it right at the end of that.
I see you're ready for the big time.
So it needs to be shared?
No, I have that. I'll stand here and just point the stuff out that we're talking about. Or stand up, however you want, so you can see better. So anyways, this is a set of market basket plans. And the first thing I usually do when I look over any of these plans like this is just go to the first page. You get your title sheet there and it tells you, usually the index of sheets on there, you can see what's in the index. Just go back there, you can read it. Go back there a little bit. And then you read the index, it tells you what's on there. We've got the cover sheet which we're looking at there and then existing conditions, they all have that. And we have the overall site plan and they all have that too, all this information. So it just gives you an index of what, what you've got inside of there. Good to know. And you take a look at the, the title block there, just to see what it is. Always tells you what it is and it tells you what the project is, who it is. And it usually has a stamp, which this one does right on the front. You can see the stamp. Engineer's stamp right on the front that they signed right there, you know? And we've got the index of sheets. You've got the revisions right there. Always important to check this revision box. It goes from the bottom up. This is most recent condition, I mean revisions on the top. It'll tell you what you're looking at. When you're looking at all the drawings inside of there, always look at that revision sheet just to see when it was revised, revised and why it was revised. It usually tells you why right there. Doesn't always, but usually does tell you why.
Where does the planning board sign?
The planning board signs the, the, there's usually a stamp right on here, the ones that the planning board signs. It's right on the cover sheet.
So we've got a copy in the...
Yeah, we've got it. These are multiple. They gave us, that's what we're using.
So we have an official copy of some of this stuff.
And it shows us the locus of it usually, just generally speaking, where that project is. Showing us, you've got the key line there. See, I don't see the north arrow on here, but the north arrow is, wait, we got it there. We've got the locus drawing here. So then, you take a look, see what's in here. Take a look and this is the existing condition plan, so when you go to the first plan, always check the title blocks, see what it says about it down there, see what that is. Existing conditions that we're looking at, same company, obviously. We got a snap by the surveyor.
Can I say something about the vicinity plans? I often feel like they're tricky with those. You know, I often will go into the town tax parcel maps because I might not know exactly what the surrounding ownership is. And I just find it really helpful because even though I, I drive by it all the time, I know where it is, but I might not exactly know, you know, where the neighbors are relative to this. And that affects how I look at these applications, which, you know, they're embedded in a community.
Yep, they are. And it does pay to go to the tax maps. These guys generally don't put that much detail on it.
No.
They just want you to know where the thing is. Sometimes they have a bigger map on the front of this company. They give you enough information to know where it is.
They'll tell you, you know, they'll tell you who lives there, but you, you don't see where the lines are.
No, you don't.
They're all things together.
And they don't have to put that on the site plan. There's too much information that they have to do on it anyway.
The one is the same. Sometimes we see on our agenda, section whatever, block whatever, lot whatever. And you go down the street and there's nothing but trees. You don't know where the property is.
Well, that's when you do what Victoria's talking about and you go over the tax maps and you research it. Find out what the heck is this lot number or map number, you know, where are we, if you're curious about it and that will tell you. You can still drive down the street and say, oh, there are trees there.
Yeah, it's a kind of sign, you know, zoning here, planning board here in Tuesday.
Get the longitude, latitude, then you can find it easy.
So this first drawing just shows us what's, what's existing now, shows us what's there. It shows us that the farmhouse that has been removed down there. And you've got all your contour lines that show you how the slope of the land is gonna be right there. And again, those contour lines are numbered. You can see like you've got 502, 503. So we can see out towards Route 10, 503, that's higher than it is moving in. In and in and in, we're getting to like 497 here. You can see that Route 10, you know, we've got 503 there and it's sloping gradually down, 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 down. And these are like, not very close together, they're like five feet apart there. I don't know, we'll just have to measure to see. Showing us that and just generally what's there. We've got a wetland area there, wetland area there, they're gonna mitigate here. But it just gives you the general lay of the land and what's there, where the property lines are. This guy showed us the key line, which is helpful. They wanted to keep down this on the side there. And does a general, what's on, on Route 10, so on and so forth. So that's, that's what's there now. So then, go down to another. Next one here, which we've got, is that's the existing conditions plan. And as you see, there's a match line right there. See that match line right there says what line, what sheet it's matched to. Match line, Sheet 2. This is Sheet 2 and you can see they're all numbered, they're all on Sheet 2 right there. Match line, that says Sheet 3 right there. So if you put those two together, it'll be one long, long line. I couldn't fit it on one, so that's why they do the match lines here. So right there, this is the tail end of it here where actually nothing's gonna be built. Again, it gives us the same stuff, lets us know what the contour of the land is, relatively flat again. It also shows us the soils maps there. This is 613B and these are the soil numbers right here. This is 916, this is 916. And you can use a soils book, which is right here, and you can find out what those are. It'll usually tell you if you go up one here. Yeah, they've got the soils right here, which is basically what that soil is. You can take these soil numbers here, although they left one out. That one isn't in there. 613B isn't there. I don't think that exists, I think they may have said. But you can look it up in this soils book here. We'll look up, we've got 613B. So let's see. And we have these, these soils books over at the, at the town hall.
Oh, this is soil. It's, it's dirt plus slope, right?
Uh, it, it tells you basically what to expect for a slope on a certain soil condition. 613B right there. So this is a 613B, it's grogged, loam, fine sand, zero to 5% slopes. And that's how they categorize it, as you can expect. Those kinds of slopes, that kind of, and we're talking about these numbers right here. That's what's under the ground. They checked it out, the soil survey. Probably done, to see what's there in the soil. And then it just tells you what the soil is. And in that particular case, it says it's a nearly level or gently sloping, moderately well-drained soil on glacial level. You can see there, yeah, it's true, it's pretty flat in here. And it just tells you in here where the soil basically came from and what to expect of it and what to report at some point.
When they do those, how far down do they take the soils?
It depends what they're looking at, but usually they go down a couple of feet. If they're doing it for wetlands, they don't go down that often deep. They go down maybe two feet there. But if they're doing it for the drainage part of it, they'll go down four, five feet. They're trying to see where the water table is, if they can find it in there.
And part of it's a color match too, right?
Oh, it's all color match. Yeah, a lot of it is all color, especially with delineating what your wetlands are and stuff. It's a lot of its color and what it is in there. If it's real fine, fine sand, or something like that, or limestone type stuff in there, or gravel.
And do they take like an actual core sample?
Sometimes they do, yeah. These numbers here, like that, they probably didn't go out and do the field. They may have, but they probably didn't. But they probably went to the soils survey of New Hampshire and just took it off of that. Then, when the engineers get out there to put the building down, then they're gonna take the core samples to see what's gonna support the building down there and what they have to do, how much they have to dig out. But these are generally just for, for their benefit and for the planning board's benefit as well. So that we know what's there for soil, what to expect on it. So let's see, what else is here? And then this is again, existing conditions. The next one is the same one. Now we've got the match line on, is that? You guys are ahead of us, okay. This is, this is the, the same tail end of that piece. Those wetland in there, that's the wet in here. And you can see as those contour lines get real close together, you can tell that that steep, it goes down quite a bit because these contour lines are, let's see, 40 foot there. 15 feet apart, these are 15 feet apart here. When you go down here, it's real, real close together, so it goes downhill. Anytime, when you're looking at those soil, soil lines there, if, if the, the contour goes away from you, it means there's probably a crown on the land. The land is crowned up like that. If the contour line comes toward you, it's probably a valley in the land of that. So you can tell from looking at, at, that when this comes in here, that goes out a little bit. So it's crowned up a little bit right there. This is coming back toward you, so it's in. It's a little bit deeper in there. This is a hard one to tell because it's so flat. Some of the other ones we get are a lot different than this. You can really tell a lot from it. And we get to Sheet 4, which is the overall site plan. This is what they intend to do, which is usually a general site plan. And again, you just check everything, check the title block, see what you got here, what they're telling you it is. Check the revisions. And then you check the scale too. You see the scale of it there, it's always marked there? That scale, if you look at this one, is 80 feet per inch. Now we'll go back to the other one here, let's see, near the 40. Now, you notice gotten down to 43, typically it'll be 30 or 40 feet per inch. Now, you'll notice gotten down to 40 feet, typically the 30 or 40 feet per inch. So it always pays to check the scale when you're looking at these drawings, to know what you're looking at and to use a scale. We're going to use this architect, I mean, using our scales, just so we can see this on the drawing. Anyways, we're to the sheet four, which is the overall, what they're going to do with it. So they went down to a double scale, because they needed to get the whole thing on that one page, just so you can see what they want to do. Their buildings here, what with their parking there, basically, that's how it's laid out. So always remember that that scale may change. Let's see, we go to site preparation plan, and this is on sheet five. So this is what they're going to do, and this is how they're going to do it. They're going to prep the site this way. They're going to show you what they're going to do, they're probably going to remove this fence, as they've got an notation on there, that fence is there, they're going to remove that. They're always telling you that the house is going anyway. They're telling you they're going to move those trees there, they're going to get these trees out of the way here, they're going to put a temporary way in there, just so they can get their trucks and stuff in and off of Route 10, they're going to do that. And those are the things they're going to do, with any couple of steel fence up there. Again, it doesn't, it isn't on here, but you go to the legend to see what some of these things are, and you might want to find out what the heck it is, and it'll tell you that's a steel fence there, and that's how they're, that's the line, so wetland again there. So that's what they're going to do, to prepare the site for building.
Is that skillless, do you understand?
Now, this set of plans, do the people who are doing the actual, say, grading and moving soil and that, are they working from this same set of plans?
They are, yeah. A lot of this stuff in here, if you know, the notes, again, are important to read these notes, they say on all of the sheets, but mainly those notes are for the contractor, and that's for him to work off of here. And yeah, they will use these drawings, and they're going to measure off of these drawings with the engineer scales that we have here. And this is, this is the thing, we have the exact same stuff that they do. And again, this is another site prep plan right here. Scale again, revisions, they revise this one for, added stockpile later, they added a big stockpile topsail there. Because they'll go down and add those revisions on there after they see the planning board. Sometimes the planning board say, no, we want you to do this or that, and they'll come back with drawings, and you can see that they revised it because the planning board said something or other. There's one right there, says revision for submitted to the planning board, that second one there. So the planning board must have wanted something different in there, whatever it was, but again, this is what they're going to do, and I can note the legend here, and that's how that legend shows up here, shows you what all these little guys made. They're all pretty much the same in a lot of these engineers, but some of them use different signs for different things, so you always really need to check that, even if you know what a line means, it's always pays to go check that legend over there. And you'll see that as they get further in their drawings, sometimes they add things to it, so they'll give you an existing legend, and they'll give you a proposed one, the things that they're going to add into that legend, and what those things are. Let's go to, this is the site layout plan, so this one here pretty much tells the lesson of what the planning board is interested in as well, it shows what they're going to do, aren't they going to lay out our parking? Of course, where the building is going, and it gets down to some dimensions from this one. So that's where the engineers scale, we've seen all these three-corner rulers here, there are two different types, there are architect scales and engineer scales. For all these drawings here, these dirt drawings, we always use the engineer scale. So the architect scales go like quarter inch or foot, each is per foot, these go to feet per inch, these engineer scales, because the drawings are big. So you check 40, 40 feet to an inch, and these scales here, you guys have one up there, here's another one right here.
So how do I do this?
So here's what you do, is you go to check your scale first. You see it's 40, 40 feet per inch, and then you check this here, there's 40 right there, keep on turning around, you've got 60 feet per inch, 50 feet per inch, 20 feet per inch. So you put your 40 feet per inch to the left-hand side, it's got them all marked off, 30, 40, 10, 20.
So how is this section?
You put it on your left, and each, each one of these, you've got your 40 footer there.
28 feet?
Right there. So put that to your left hand, so you can read it there. So if each one of these, it is 5, 10, 15, 20, they all go that way. Each of those longer lines is five feet. So now you've got 20 feet, you've got 40 feet right there, that you want to check it with your scale, to make sure that those guys got it right. So you put that right at the beginning of the zeros, put the zero to the zero, nope, put the zero, see that little zero right there? Put that to that, and you see if it comes up to 40. And it does, you have 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 40. So when you're doing these drawings, always check the scale, always check the scale to make sure.
So I know it's a 40?
Yeah, but make sure it's a 40. Take your ruler, because they make mistakes on these drawings sometimes, didn't you? So you put your zero, put the zero right there, zero, put the zero, and each one of those lines is five, so you've got 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 30, plus 40, you've got 40, take it there. So now we know they're correct.
We know theirs are, are 10s.
They're 10, 20, you've got 5, you've got 40, 40, you've got that. So if you want to know how far their parking, maybe their parking space, they're not saying that those are nine feet. So you put your zero, you have to write it there, then you bring out, and you can see that it's just not 10.
Yep.
So they're saying it's nine feet, so that is correct.
So this distance?
So you can maybe, their parking and things like that, we're just going to walk in there, so you put your scale, put your zero right there, they're saying they're what, to nine feet? So we're looking out here, we have five, and it's just barely below the 10, so they're nine feet, they're correct.
Just to whatever.
So we can measure any of that stuff, you know.
And that's one of those sometimes, if you're looking at five spaces, it just shows up as 45.
Because I, you know, I have to make like a...
It might be, yeah.
I can take a known distance of the parking space and then make a ruler that's...
That's a rough...
So the engineer scale, you read one of these before?
It's better, better one, yeah.
Engineer scale's a good thing to use to go over when we're looking over all these drawings there, because sometimes you want to know, let's say, how far from like property line, this is the key line, how far from the key line is that piece right there? So you put your zero on the piece, we're counting out, so right there, we're about eight feet. We've got five, and about three little ones there, so we've got eight feet there. So it's good to know that, but you can still ask the engineer, but it's best to know yourself what you're doing on there, or you can question what they're doing. So it's good stuff. Now, on these, this is a legend, so they changed the legend on these. Sometimes I go, you've got the legend there, existing, this is what we had before, this is what suppose, they're adding all those things. They're adding these things into the legend, and it's always good to look at that legend there. This is what we've had so far in the drawing, now they're adding those into, you know, things like capations, things like that, and then again, to the drainage. And we'll be able to go over, there's another thing that we need to look at, which is drainage on the ground, so we make sure that it's laid out, and we'll get to their drainage run, if you have a different one, parking here.
Doesn't need to hit in front of them.
So let's flip them to the next one here, we've got drainage, you've got grading and drainage plan, so this is showing you what they're going to do. Now, we know that they had these contour lines, so those squiggly contour lines out, we know what the field looked like, and they left them in there, too, all those little squiggly lines.
So these are the before, before they moved the dirt at all?
Well, no, this is before and after. It makes it confusing, because they leave them in there sometimes, and you can't really see. You've got all this interference, all these lines going all over the place, but this is their drainage plan, what they're going to do.
So this is after they moved all the dirt around, is what we see?
After they moved the dirt around, we kind of have to ignore, we have to ignore the squiggly lines and go by these, these by like 502 right there, seal it these ways. This 502, this is what they're, it's going to be flat, so that way it's straight, and it's coming back toward you, so it means it's dipped in, it's going in this way, because you can see the contour line coming back toward you, that's the end of the good parking cars, that's how they've got, setting it all off like that. So this is the elevation, 502, oh yeah, those lines are elevation lines, I didn't say that before, but these are feet above sea level, 502, 502, we've got 504, that's what, you know, all these contour lines, I think that means. So you can see that they've got it slanted that way, and it's straight along, that means it's a flat area. You can also see that they've got these squiggly little lines, look like a little arrow, see these little worm lines right there? And they've got arrows on them, that's the intended path of the drainage. They figured to drain this way, and they've got in the center, DCB and CB.
So the squiggly points in the direction?
That's what you need to know.
That's what it's showing?
Yes.
Okay, what sea were they talking about?
They're talking about the ocean, and I would assume the ocean seaboard here.
Okay, so we're only 502 feet above?
That's right, yeah.
Above the ocean?
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And all of these, and you'll see those lines in here, this is 495 feet above sea level. And okay, so that's how all of these seas are, they're all set up, and they even have a thermometer to do it, that's what they, how they set it up.
I see the waters come both directions.
Yeah, because they've got these.
Yes, and these are drains until the east.
Yeah, and we'll see these, it says DCB, DCB and CB, that stands for catch basin, you see, there's DCB, DCB is double catch basin, you can see that that grate is bigger than the others, and then if one says just CB, that's just a regular catch basin, just a single grate. So you can see, that's where they have to water drainage to, right there. And you can see the drain lines they have underneath of the pipe connecting it right there, with the D on it there. So again, those squiggly lines tell you where the engineer figures the water to go. And a lot of this is for the dirt engineer that's actually grading the stuff off, but it's for us, too, so that we know how they set it up, and if, in our opinion, it's going to work or not. So, let's see. Really neat, and they have to drain it in there. Again, it's a complicated drawing, when they leave all the contours underneath there, but I guess, I'm sure before and after. So let's go to, this is grading drainage plan, this is for the part that they didn't end up using, but just showed you what they're going to do in the field, because they had to mitigate some wetlands, I believe, some wetlands over there. They showed you how they're doing their, that's that drainage pond there, how they graded that whole thing off, again, feet above sea level, it's 400, so 450 goes right down to 486. So it's still right down into that pond, and we all know what that pond, and we've seen it right there. Now, on this one, you'll also see something like that, it's TP right there. TP stands for test pit, test pit, test pit, they have a number two, and they usually have, engineers have a sheet that, those test pits tells you how deep they went, they tell you where they saw the water table, if they saw the water table at all, and it tells you what they encountered for soils and so on and so forth. But that's what those things do, and that's what...
So those are the locations that they actually...
That's exactly where, yeah, exactly where they're coming from, like there, and you'll see them, they'll be, let's see, I'm running on this, because they're putting a building there, you'll see them all over the building area, so they have to do these test pits to know what's underneath there in order to support the weight of the buildings there. So that's what they have with those. Now, you'll see on this drawing here, they've got a drainage schedule, and this is a pretty handy little thing, not all the drawings have them, but this particular one does. So you can use this drainage schedule, and you can trace out any of those catch basins that they have in this, in this set of sheets now. Unfortunately, this should be on the other sheet, because there's probably not a room for it. So let's see, we have double catch basin 14, that's right there, double catch basin 14, that's right there. You can look it up on here, see it right there, double catch basin 14. So that gives you the rim elevation, that means that's the top, that's where the manhole is right on the ground, that's the rim elevation. Then they give you an invert-out elevation, which is the bottom manhole where the water runs, and it tells you what structure it goes to. So, that one right there, yep, that tells you that the rim elevation, this flat level elevation is 498.5 above sea level, and the invert-out, and the invert means that there's a drain in the bottom of it, now, that's where the invert is, they use them in both sewer and regular drainage manholes, and that elevation is to the bottom of the pipe. So they tell you that, and they tell you the in and the out, and then they also tell you where it goes to, if you're tracing it down. So this one here goes through double manhole 16, which, let's see, there's 14, there's 16 right there. So it shows you, it just goes, and it tells you where it goes to, it goes to number 16, and it tells you the distance, doesn't it?
30.
And it should tell you, oh, 46. Right there, 46, yeah, that's it, looks like, yeah.
Yeah, just a short little distance there, so.
Anyways, you can look up any of these drain patterns on the entire drawing, this one here has a lot more of mine, but this is more complicated, this one here. Think I started using, bringing drains in here, and here, and here, and it shows you where they all go, they all are going this way.
So Scott, when you personally, I know this is in your area of your own expertise, when you're looking at a plan like this, what are you looking for, what are you trying to determine?
I'm looking, I'm looking to see if it makes sense, if I think it works or not. Now, I'm looking to see if, say, the drainage, for instance, if it looks like it's actually going to work, or is it, is it just for show, and is it going to run off on somebody else's property, you know, or is there something behind it that the engineers didn't take, like, say, a large hill on the backside on somebody else's property that runs onto their property, even though it shouldn't, that they didn't take in consideration. They usually do, but sometimes they don't. Just, just see if it makes sense to you, and just follow it out, you know, if it'll run a bunch of drains to, we'll say, to the left of the site, and then just one little long drain somewhere else is going to the right side, you're going to want to know, where the heck is that drain going? Is it going in the same place that those guys are putting it, or is it going into the sewer?
So you, you literally, you traced those lines to see where they're exiting, right?
Well, just, and it's, right, you just stand there and see where they go, yeah, and see how, just, it gives you an idea how it works. Then you can ask the engineers, like, why did they do that, or what does this mean? If you don't understand something on there, you say, well, what is this little thing here? I don't see in the legend, and I don't know where that line goes. And the engineer, if he knows the stuff, he can explain it to you, if he doesn't, then that's a drunk.
Did you calculate the pitch, too, like you would in the plumbing in a house?
Uh, I don't have to, because it's right here, it's right on, it's a pitch.
So you're going to just look at the distance and the drop on...
The slope is on that left-hand side, I believe, is it on this next one? Yeah, it's on that one there. You can always, and they always tell the slope, because the contractor has to know that, and the engineer on site can check that, and there's a slope, so we're, yeah. And it's, it was percentage of a foot.
That is, that is...
That's what it is, it's not feet, or not like quarter inch or eighth inch, it's decimals of a foot, is how that's set. They use every, decimals for everything in here.
What is the invert-inversion elevation? The structure of the elevation?
So that's, that's invert, they call the bottom of that, or the drainage part of the manhole the invert, for whatever reason, we do not know. But that elevation is to the bottom of that invert, and you notice that some of them are like three tenths of an inch higher or lower, some of them are three inches lower, but the one coming in is higher, and the one going out is lower. That's, that's all it means, that's all it is. And again, the schedule here is a lot for the contractors doing this work, because they're going to have the transit out there, and they're going to see if those things work with the site. The engineer is supposed to have done this all to the site, to see if the bottom elevation on this one is going to be higher than the bottom elevation on that one way over there.
Do we have, you know, does code enforcement, how do we check this? Does code enforcement go out there, or we just take the word for it?
We have to take the word for it, because they have engineers on site, they don't want it to fail, they want it to be a good job.
That's good, when it's something like this, but what about some of the smaller things that we do?
It all depends on the plans that they give us, you know, we go by whatever they give us for plans, and the more we know about these larger plans, the more questions we can ask about those incomplete plans. So it gives us a good background, if we just sit down and take a look at some of these things and just go over it. So, let's see, I don't know what here we're doing, so.
That's great.
You can't affect it. So we've got the utilities plan, okay, this is going to show where the sewer and the water go in, it usually shows where the electrical comes into the building, and into the site. Okay, so in this one here, we've got sewer marked with an S right there, and the water's marked with a W right there, it's like we've got it over here, W and S. You've got the sewers coming in, sewer right there, S and W there, sewer and water lines, maintain the separation, you can always check them to see if they're separate, but you can see what the separation is between the two with your engineer scale, and let's see what it is between those two. Let's see here, so they maintain separation, let's see, a little bit more, and they've Let's see, a little bit more, and they've got tens, eleven, twelve feet, so they have to have ten, they got twelve feet.
No, but you gotta account for that.
Well, I gotta account for.
Quiet, you're right.
Yep. So, and when they're doing it in the field.
It has to be.
It, it makes sense. Go around the drawing, but you're right, when they're in the field. So we've got water coming in over here by the looks, going around the building. Looks like sewer and water coming in both sides there. Going to manhole, see, SMH four right there, that means sewer manhole. SMH four, yep, sewer manhole, that sewer manhole five, just, yeah, four. But these are SMH sewer manholes. Everything goes to those. And it usually tells a direction, I don't see it here, but generally the direction of, of drainage, which in this case will be that way and that way. But it'll show it on another drawing.
No, they, they get Keen mark.
That's right, yeah. Now, it shows here that the water is coming from Keen. Proposed water meter pit, so they're gonna take the city water from Keen right there to get onto that little guy. And they're gonna take the Keen sewer to get on right there. That's right, and it's from up here is where they're coming in. Because again, we look here, a little bit, the driveway comes from Keen line right there. And you see that they're gonna tap in there, the two water, and right there, come up here. So, let's see. And this shows other things on it, as far as, they've got a.
Is this the water line right there?
Yeah, yeah, we've got a big grease trap in there, our water system there.
This, this black line right here that starts right here.
They're showing us also this.
Those all the ways.
Here to see.
The pressure line though.
Right there. A lot of the water's coming in here, and training the ground, and also going all the way down here, going back to your initial drainage.
I wish we had a map.
I don't know.
I think it terminates.
Yeah.
Does it keep going, or does it terminate here?
The water?
Yeah.
Stopped right there.
Oh, okay.
Right at the gate, that there, see, they, it says a thrust block right there, it says thrust block, that means they handed it right there. It's a big giant wave in there, so the pressure of the water will shove the valve off and just blow off under, under there. If there, if that made a turn, you'd also see a thrust block there, because at all the turns, they usually put a big thrust block there, so it can't blow back out. But right, and it ends, like that.
Now, these people over here, they don't, they don't have a lot of.
They, they probably do.
They do, we have that, um, apartment, like condo place, or whatever it is, it's right.
Or then, uh, what is it, the, the, um, guy, yeah, isn't it? Guy at the front there. Now, they, and the, there's the.
Fast friends.
Fast friends, yeah, the, the.
Yeah.
Fast friends are behind there, now they, their sewer goes through their backyard and hooks onto the mat.
Mathers down there.
That's how that goes to there. On there, so.
Is that mapped in town with those lines? Do we just need this in the paragraph and data?
You mean, like, for the fast friends there?
Okay, okay.
But it's, it's not on the site plan. It is on their property, it's generally on the site plans.
I mean, is there an overall map for the town of Swansea that shows?
Well, yeah, like you said, they're working on it, but we have them at the treatment plant, maps of all, all the streets, where all the sewers on there. It doesn't necessarily show where all the water is unless they hid it there, unless they knew it was there.
Yeah.
And it doesn't necessarily show what's on the part of property of the fast friends there. That, you'd have to go to the site plan for that, to find out where those, those lines went, and why they did it, and if they did.
Because I feel like we've got a lot of institutional knowledge, like in the rain, you know?
Oh, no, we have, we have all this stuff on, on paper, we do.
We do.
Yeah, we do. Okay, so this brings us down to the water extension plan. So this is how they're gonna get the water to, again, they're taking it off, off of the Winchester Street. And like we saw right there, they're, they're tapping on right there, proposed water meter pit, right there and there. That's what we saw in the other drawing. We saw those two little diagonal lines over there, because here's the main, main, uh, site plan. So, this is just background for those guys. They didn't really even need to do that, but it just shows them background, I guess, is what they wanna do, but it's.
My husband's very polite.
Is it, right there?
Yes.
So.
Well, actually, you know, that's very.
Basically, that's the engineer. And, let's see. So this is, this is interesting here. This is the sewer plan and profile. Now, if you notice there, you've got, you've got the sewer plan. Again, that's water in the sewer, sewer is S. The other one is, that means water. And you've got a profile drawing right there. You've got a profile, so this is looking up to see how the slopes go. If you're standing and cut away the ground and looked at it that way, to see how that slope went in the ground with it there. And you'll notice that the scale is different on that. So if you look at your scale, all you need to do, you've got the profile, you've got the scale, one inch equals forty feet. But then you've got the vertical scale that sneak in on you. One inch equals four feet.
Oh, okay.
So they've cut it right down, and the reason they do that, one inch equals forty feet, and the vertical, that's horizontal. Vertical is one inch equals four. So they've really blasted it down there a bit. And the reason they do that is if you drew it out with a scale, the length that it is.
The pitches on sewer lines are so slow that.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't even see the thing move at all, you'd think that, that's a flat line, that can't possibly work. So they've added in, they, they've changed the scale. And you can use your, your engineer scale for that. It's just that, instead of the forty feet, it's the four feet. So, let's see, they won't put that. Let's see here. If you're measuring the height from, we'll say, that elevation right from there. So you check the scale there, make sure it's a forty feet, yeah, or anywhere on forty feet, round four. So now you're just at one, two, three, four. So, above, say, that four ninety area there. Let's see, it's, it's about two feet to the bottom of the pipe. See that, you could be going just one, two, three, four, instead of ten, twenty, thirty, forty. One, two, three, four. So on this architect's scale, the vertical part, you can use, it's a forty-foot scale. But instead of ten, twenty, thirty, forty, you're one, two, three, four, and you're measuring vertical that way. So, let's see, also, in these, in these drawings like this, you've got what they call stations. This is station, that, see that, that line right down there, so it's zero. That line there down the bottom, that's a zero station, those are the station marks. And the dirt engineers, or Alan Blood, he's always calling them dirt engineers, to take out of that. But, uh, they use these for measuring long distances. Now, you notice it's like zero plus zero, zero, and one plus zero, zero, two plus zero, zero. They're starting here, zero point zero plus zero, zero, one plus zero, zero, two plus zero, so on and so forth. Well, the number before the plus always stands for one hundred. So that would be one hundred feet, and if, say, if it's a twenty-nine, it'd be a hundred and twenty-nine feet. They've made it easy for us here. One hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, all the way, until they get down to plus forty-seven. So actually, that would be, that would be, uh, thousand, so that's ten plus, so it'd be a thousand plus forty-seven feet.
That's what that last one would be.
Basically, should have had the ten in front of it, make that. But they all know what they're talking about, so they do what they do, they have to do. So that's how they go, these are a hundred feet in between.
Those two zero numbers.
And again, they made it easy for us here, but if you see, in the other drawings of the layout roads or something like that, if we're looking over road layouts, you'll see the stations with, with different, uh, little thing, uh, twenty-three, fifty, sixty, eighty, whatever they have on it.
And what should, what should we be looking for when we're looking at something like this?
Well, it's just interesting to look at. The planning board doesn't have too much to do with the engineering of how the lines go, how the slope goes. But it is good to know. You know, we're looking at all these plans, we're making decisions on all these guides, these site plans and stuff, we really should know what we're looking at. To a certain extent, you know, we're looking at, just enabled to ask questions about, well, what's this, why is that?
That's all.
And to know they accounted for it.
Yeah, and to know what they're for, instead of looking at the drawing and saying, well, I don't know what the heck.
That's pretty.
But you can get, you can get different stuff on it. Now, you also notice down here, you've got these numbers here. Four ninety-seven, four ninety-nine, point one, five oh one, point two. You can go down all the way across here, five oh one point, what, five oh three point eight, five oh three point seven. So, what that means is that that's what the ground contour is now. At that point, the ground right now is five hundred and one point two feet above sea level, at that point right there. They're just showing, that's what the dotted line, the dotted line is, if the existing ground level is, right there, so it shows you that, right. It's five hundred and one point two feet to there, above sea level. But it's not gonna end up being that way. That, that line right there is, is what's supposed to be.
It's gonna be the grade.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be like that.
So we don't have to use our words to figure that out?
No, because it's already told us that.
It's telling us.
Now, if we wanna know how much higher it is.
Okay.
Then we do, the rule of what we gotta remember is the vertical scale is one inch equals four feet, and not one inch equals forty feet, so.
So Scott, would this be the, the road coming right now, or will we?
It might be, let's find out if it is or not. Um, so, these, these stations, now, these stations, like there plus, one plus zero, two plus zero, three plus, plus zero. These stations are also here. So let's see, where is that? That's right by that, uh, you've got sewer manhole number three. So if we find sewer manhole number three, see that right there, sewer manhole number three? And we see four plus zero, zero, four plus zero, zero, right there. That's where that is. And to the left of it is what we're talking about, and that's what it is.
So we can actually find it out by the ground?
Yeah, you can, that's how you find it, so, again, let's go. Sewer manhole three, as a reference, that's what this whole thing is, so you can measure how deep that manhole is. Sewer manhole three. We'll just take a look up here. There's sewer manhole three, SM three. And we see that, that four plus zero, zero, either just to this side of it. There you can see right there, four plus zero, zero, so we know that, that, that point. And we're talking about these two dips, so we know it's real up to that, and take a look. This one, this two dips. So you just, it's another way of telling where you are on the plan. And lots of times I line up with one or other, this one doesn't. You know, you can sometimes go right straight across and say, oh yeah, there's sewer manhole three and four and that. But you can't, you always have a station of it right there. You can always kind of just four plus zero, six plus zero, seven plus zero. You always know where you are on the grade. Interesting, and just, it just lets you go around the drawing a little bit better.
I guess they changed this before they went through with it.
Because.
Yeah, yeah.
This is just this.
Let's see, I think. I think we've covered a bunch on that, you know, the basic stuff that we need to know. Just gotta remember the scale change on those. And you always check the scale, and you always check the revision, always check your title block. Yeah, this is five plus zero, zero, means five hundred. The first number before the plus is always one hundred feet. So they've started at zero, so that's the beginning of the project. So that's one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred.
So this is like the.
That's a thousand.
Site?
Yep, that's as far as they're going, yeah, as far as they're going to, where they're gonna hook in. Now, another thing you might see on these is that, you'll see, see that weird looking little oval thing right there? See that oval? Well, that means, see, we're looking at the project from the sideways. That means there's a pipe coming in, either at an angle or straight towards us. That's what that means. And that means, and you counted one here, see that pipe coming straight at us? That means there's a water, there's a water on the eight inch ID, but it's coming straight at us like that. Just showing, you see, if you look on these, you might see, see the little oval thing right there, and the little oval thing right there? That means into that manhole is a pipe coming straight at us, or at a slight angle, which, that's how they show it in these things. Water line, you'll see the water line that's in the ground right over here, it's coming right at you like that.
Okay, question.
Yep.
Is this the same scale as this?
Like that big, because it's going serving these properties, is that what we're seeing?
Right there.
Where can we get in?
Can you, can you say why, why I'm seeing the, the face on it?
Because there's an existing water line there, or, or one they're putting in, one or the other, that's what it's gonna be.
And, and, and is that, is it going to sewer?
Let's find out where that is. That's in, uh, across the road there.
It's right before. Eight hundred, eight plus zero, zero.
That's seven, eight.
So we don't see, we don't know why, we know, oh, they're right there, it's right there, yeah. They've got a T off somewhere, they're going somewhere, yeah, got a T right off it, so that's that, and that's what you saw right there. It's coming straight at. Interesting to know when you're reading the plans, if it's something like that. You'll see that manhole, you think only one line going in, one going out, not the case. You've got one going in, one going out, and another one going in. That, you see a couple of them, so you'll know that there's something different there. So then you'll look at your drawing, and see, well, where does that, it'll wanna go, it'll go this way. I mean, again, a lot of this is just for the engineers, but it's for us too, because these are our drawings, they're drawn all for us, as much as they do the engineers.
Is there a, is there a, is there a?
Let's go to the next one here, let's see what we have.
So I just wanted to see, to try that out, the two plus zero, zero, because they show that right there.
Find it on here.
Find it up here.
Probably looking over here somewhere. Find the manhole if you can. Uh, is this manhole right there, or are these two manholes here?
It's this one, right here.
So find sewer manhole number two, which would be, okay, that's number one. So that's number, see, S number two, right there, right there. So you've got a line coming there, there, and there. So this, right, see that little short line right there?
Yeah.
That's that. That's what that is.
This one.
Yep, that's what that is. And this one going here is that one.
Is the oval.
Which is going into the, into the property, going or coming from the property. And the other one is the main going down to the Keen line. So that's what that little thing is there. And they're correct, showing that Keen line there. Some of them you'll see, I don't see it here, but you'll see where it'll go, say, way up here. That's, that's a drop. That means it came in higher, but they didn't want it to speak of the, the line down there. And you can't put, sewer lines too steep, and you can't put them through shell. You can't put them just right, but you'll see it's a drop in the manhole. Maybe they've got one in here, so. Is there another one here? See, yeah, there's one right there. There's a drop right there. So that, they've got sewer line going in, and then further than that one. Really looking at how it shows a drop sometimes. Sometimes the sewer lines can't go at that steep of an angle into the main there, it's not good for them to run. So it'll come as a drop, and you can see, this is a drop coming straight at you from, uh, from the property. And it would be.
A fifteen year old special.
Number two, yeah, sewer manhole number two. See, that's number one, that's number two right there.
Right.
So it's this line right there, we're looking at right there, sewer coming into there.
So it's dropping down into that flow pipe.
Um, but it's a manhole, that bigger outlet, so it's coming in at five feet above the invert, and the universe of the box. Uh, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Some, depending on the, the company that puts it in, sometimes it's just like a half a piece of pipe with a space in between. Where the water come out, if it's coming out too fast, it'll hit that, it'll go down. Normally, the water wouldn't come out that fast, so it doesn't matter, but they will sometimes put a little, this little stop in front of it. Let's see, what else we got on this one here? No, that's basically the same, same slope, yeah, same sewer plan, same stuff, the same four station numbers. They started from scrap on these station numbers here, I guess, for, oh, this is the side of the building, this goes up the side of the building, that's what that is. Because this is a grease trap, I think.
Where they have the grease trap.
Yeah, it's a grease trap right there, so that goes up the side of the building, so, that's why it started at zero, and this is starting right out at that river channel. Yeah, this goes up, this is a short line that goes up the side of the building. And perpendicular to the river channel. So, let's see, what else we got in there? We've got.
So with grease charge, is that something that gets cleaned up?
Yeah, they pump it out, they send, uh, bells or some little guy, they pump them out.
How often do they clean out the, uh, water bases?
The catch basins for the drains, is it? I don't know. I, I've seen them do it, or tried to do it every year. But I don't know if they really get to them all every year. But the, the sewer mains in the street, that's a different story, because they're two different separate systems. The sewer mains are done, um, it's a, like a rotating yearly basis. You'll take maybe, um, three miles of your sewer, and you'll clean it with a jet, jet truck, one year. And then you'll go do another three miles the next year, and then rotating things, so maybe in five years you've done them all. Then you'll go do another three miles the next year, and then rotating things, so maybe in five years you've done them all. And then you start all over again.
Do we ever, as a condition of approval, request like a schedule of cleaning things like that? Is that our business?
It's not really our business, because it's too hard. The planning board has no authority to enforce. So even if we did say it, then, you know, the code enforcement guy can do it, and of course, the selecting can, but the planning board can't. It's no business doing that. But we, we can say that we want you to clean that out every year, and we want you to give a report to the road agent of that clean out. And they have to do it. Now whether they do it or not, and then it's extrapolated.
Right, never a tickle in your calendar. Oh, boy.
So let's see, we've got, we've got the landscaping plan here, which is pretty self-explanatory there. Landscaping plan, and landscape plan for the rest of the property and genre there, what we're gonna do with the pond. And let's see, we've got sewer water management plan. Again, this is, we'll have to check it because, yeah, that's, that's how they deal with the sewer water for the entire project. They're gonna take a look at the scale, and when they snuck a fifty foot one in on us on that one, they changed the scale to fifty feet that time. But this pretty much takes the whole, whole thing in to just show us how they're doing it, where it's going. We can use that schedule back there if we forget where it's going. But generally, it's going down here, right into there, and then sheet side over into that area there.
Notes on this page, right?
Yeah, most of those are mainly for the contractor. They've got infiltration system there. And it's just interesting stuff to know, to see how they've got it, see if they missed anything, which they usually don't, but you never know. There are mistakes on these drawings here, and as in everyone, they could miss, you know, could miss something back there, not be a catch basin back there to know where the water's going. Plan, we could fix them up.
And there the deal is, every drop of water has to stay on that parcel.
It's supposed to, yeah, and the engineer certifies that that happens, because the planning board cannot certify. They don't know if it's gonna happen or not. They can tell if it looks like their system is laid out properly, if it's gonna work. Doesn't mean we can find out from the drawings here, but we really don't know. Engineers are paid, and, and it's their, their stamp on the line if it doesn't work, and if it doesn't work, they have to fix it.
Okay, now, the drawings all show a third building.
Yeah.
That was, that was.
No, we approved it, that's why it's on, it was approved, but they just don't know. And this whole thing, I think is that where they put that big dirt pile, you'll see in the legend now, it's a legend. Think that they had a big topsoil pile somewhere in that. I think probably. So they, uh, they're just parking here now, and that's gonna be parking, they're gonna pave it now.
This is liquor store.
Yeah, liquor store, they're parking there for liquor stores, and they're gonna go out and have the liquor stores with them.
Yeah, these people, yeah, shot from Massachusetts.
You know, I think it's about to the end of the year, the rest is probably details, again, mainly for the contractor, to show them what they're doing there.
And that's generally just boilerplate, right? It's not specific necessarily to this one.
Oh, see, you're right, it's generally boilerplate, sometimes it gets specific in, in some of the catch basins, in most of that between.
I have seen it, it's specific.
Do we ever, do we, do we pay attention to it?
Um, only for specific things, if there's something, we'll say the drainage plan that you're wondering, uh, what does that catch basin look like, or, or how are they building those catch basins, or are they? This'll tell you, if you're actually, how they're doing some of that stuff there. Because they know basically, but again, it's, it's boilerplate stuff, it's the, they all, they all basically, this is how it works, that's all. It shows you the, you know, some of the, you know, some of the. Simple, you can see that. We're counting engineering, other contractors gonna, this shows us how the catch basins and sewer manholes are built. It's a drain manhole there, it's coming here, catch basin, they're telling you there. Generally, that's how the contractor's supposed to build it, in and out, you see the flow. You can see invert is the bottom, generally right there. Mine's a little bit higher than they are. Again, we have just details of the whole thing. They've got a detail of their infiltration system, you've seen those, and some of Chad's stuff too. Basically, how they're building it, the chamber, they're building, again, that's really nothing for the planning board. It's interesting to look at, but it's only for engineers, for the contractor, to show what it's supposed to build. And what the chamber system is doing. And that's, that's the layout of the chamber system, that's how I can do it. Where the manhole is supposed to be. Yeah, there's a different manhole, that, that's an outlet structure for it, it's a little slightly different than the other one. Like that emergency overflow there, I wonder where that goes? Oh, it goes like that here, I see.
When they say chamber, what does that mean? What is this actually?
It's sectioned off, you can see in this one here, it's chambered to slow the flow of the water down. The water comes in there and it goes from chamber to chamber, and it's supposed to break it up and slow it down, these things here. And it allows it to go over there.
So that has to, has to flow smoothly through that.
It does, yeah. A lot of it's in there, a lot of figuring out in there. It's a good way to address it, because it's right under the parking lot, and you see that, it doesn't check out any, any, there. And we wanted to learn about that cleanup, they didn't throw it there, but they have cleanup in them, and a back report in them, so they know where the silt is there, it's supposed to be. They do, yeah, they get a regular jetter to do it.
You have to do it today?
And again, details of how the water line, the valves are supposed to be. Again, not real for us, for the engineers.
Just care about the pipes.
Yeah, they, they have a lane.
I'm the one before that, just the holes.
They have the detail of the holes there. Should have, sometimes, details of that, yeah, there they are, they have details of everything, should be in there. Let's see, long set of plans, but it was a, a really good set of plans to. This is the invert of the sewer manhole, that's all, that's how it works, that's what it's called. And it's not a pipe, it's just a half circle. And it always breaks up there, you see that in, of the wear. And you can see that's how the engineer wants it to make a corner, or, or, that's how they want you to lay the bricks up. They want it to go that way, and they want it to go that way.